Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. Will the Clerk please call the rule?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. Wilson, Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, the agenda is amended. We have, let's go. So first, we have proclamation by Councilwoman Gross.
Sure.
Yeah, would you like to-
Actually, I was waiting for Councilwoman Coghill. I'm not sure if he's on route.
Okay, well, we could-
Do you want to do the other one first?
Yes.
Is there a second one? Yeah, there is another one. Oh, wait, that's also by Councilwoman Coghill. Well, I'll start. I'll start mine. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. Can we have our guests for the National Association of Women in Construction come forward? Hi, come on up. Remember, kind of the cameras that way. She can just stand right over here. It's good to see everybody. Thank you. We're happy to do this proclamation again. This is such a great acknowledgement to have annually because we know that it's important for us to expand all kinds of inclusion in our trades. These are great jobs. They pay well. I personally know some women, some female teenagers who were doing apprenticeships in trade work welding and some other work, so I'm really excited to hear about that. So I appreciate you all being here today. Whereas the city of Pittsburgh, as well as the region of Western Pennsylvania, continues to strive for higher levels of construction and development growth. Whereas the city of Pittsburgh is committed to reaffirming the goals of fair opportunities for women and minorities in the construction industry. Whereas the National Association of Women in Construction, or NAWIC, is a nonprofit and international organization that promotes and supports the advancement and employment of women in the construction industry. NAWIC, now founded in 1955 in Texas, now serves more than 4,000 members in 115 chapters in the United States and Canada, as well as affiliates in Australia, New Zealand, United Kingdom, and South Africa. Whereas the Pittsburgh area Chapter 161 of NAWIC was first chartered on March 29th, 1969, with 33 founding members, and now includes women who are actively employed in all aspects of the construction industry, such as business owners, managers, consultants, tradeswomen, operators, architects, accountants, and attorneys. Whereas during the week of March 3rd through 9th, 2024, NAWIC chapters throughout the United States and Canada will be holding special events to celebrate the annual Women in Construction Week. Whereas the Council for the City of Pittsburgh wishes to recognize and commend the women who participate in the construction industry throughout our region, now for now, therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby proclaims the week of March 3rd through 9th, 2024, as Women in Construction Week.
We have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Hi. Yay! Now it's official!
So thank you to City Council for having us here today to accept the Proclamation of Women in Construction Week, and special thanks to Councilwoman Gross for always sponsoring our proclamation, and also Councilwoman Coghill for his support. So my name is Sherri Thomas, and I am the President of the Pittsburgh Chapter of the National Association of Women in Construction, otherwise known as NAWIC, and I have here today Caitlin Andressi, who is also a board member of NAWIC. I'm also a founder and President of SB Thomas, which is a WDBE advisory construction management firm here in Pittsburgh. So National Women in Construction Week is upon us, and it's a time to celebrate and recognize the remarkable contribution contributions of women in the construction industry. During this week, I think it's important for us to think about the strength, resilience, and knowledge that women bring to this vital career field. The theme for this year's Women in Construction Week is Keys to the Future. It's a celebration of the powerful role women play in shaping the construction industry's trajectory. Just like keys unlock doors, women are unlocking opportunities, innovation, and progress in construction. Why celebrate women in construction? One, diverse perspectives. We bring unique perspectives, problem-solving skills, and creativity to construction projects. Our presence enriches the industry and fosters innovation. Two, trailblazers. From architects to engineers, project managers to skilled tradeswomen, we have broken barriers and paved the way for future generations. We hope our courage and determination is an inspiration to others. Finally, empowerment. By empowering women in construction, we empower the entire industry. When women succeed, we all succeed. Part of our mission at NAWIC Pittsburgh is to increase the number of women in construction. One of our annual initiatives is Camp NAWIC, which is a free week-long day camp for girls in grades eight through 12 to provide hands-on experience so they can learn about opportunities in the construction industry. Last year, the campers spent a day at the Carpenter's Union Hall where they built a wooden toolbox. They spent a day with the ironworkers where they learned to tie rebar and weld. This year's camp will be held June 24th to the 28th, and we have received amazing support from construction companies and the trade unions for the camp. Remember, the future of construction is bright, and women hold the keys. Thank you for being a part of our journey. Together we build not only structures, but also a legacy of progress and equality. Thank you.
All members come to the front.
My husband looked at me like, "Something like that." He needs new jackets.
Madam Clerk, we have two to be read into the record. Could please do so?
Councilmembers Gross and Coghill present. Now therefore be it resolved- Sorry. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Coghill presents. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, March 8th, 2024 to be FOP Fort Pitt Lodge Number 1, 2023 Retirees Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilperson Strasburger presents. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, March 5th, 2024 to be E.B. Pepper Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, proclamations are approved. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that rules of council state that the comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, deliberation, which may be before council. Profanity is not permitted. When you are called to speak, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Suver, Bamako Mali, McGlue Global Intelligence Society candidate for U.S. President 2024, globalintelligencessociety.org. A campaign music influencer for my group, The Rondos, is the brilliant bassist, guitarist, singer, composer Esperanza Spalding, very well-known for black gold. She is that, I think. She is anti-diva. She is a jazzist activist, and I respect her enormously. A concern of the Pittsburgh City Council is the vote. Voting is the U.S. Constitution Amendment 1 guaranteed key of free speech, the core of U.S. Republican democracy. We, the people, must be in control of our vote, or that Republican democracy is dead. We are not in control of our own individual votes, so in my view, our democracy is dead. Among the gravediggers are people who are on this council, Badass and all that, Warwick, Gross, et al., and Allegheny County Executive Claimant Sarah Inamorato. On 12 January 2024, I got a text from SI who said, quote, "I want your voice in county government." I wonder if 500,000 adults in Allegheny County also got that text. I doubt it. Here is my voice, SI, in Allegheny County, Pittsburgh City, public comment on 24 January 2024. I voiced challenge SI to go to the Allegheny County Election Division to see if the vote, if her vote, has been misplaced or misapplied. This Vote by Voter Verification for Home Act is guaranteed by both the U.S. and Pennsylvania constitutions, yet Allegheny County and the State of Pennsylvania deny this guarantee. Will SI, will you help us essentially rise from the dead? If ACED allows SI to verify her vote, FW, then the ACED and the State of Pennsylvania must do so for any of us, Shapiro's actions recently, nonwithstanding. But if SI does not go to the ACED to do VVVFW on her own vote, it is evidence at the county level that the DPRP framework colludes intentionally to prevent citizens from verifying our own votes, violating the U.S. Constitution, PA Constitution, and the constitutions of 49 other states.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Dr. Margot Kimball, and thank you, Councilwoman Wilson. Forgetting that's gone this morning.
Margot Kimball, Mount Washington. My name is Margot Kimball, and I founded and run Pittsburgh Girls Who Walk. Founded in 2022, the organization prides itself on providing safe spaces for women of all ages and backgrounds in our city to meet and make connections that they otherwise may not have. But this past Sunday, that safety was jeopardized, and the City of Pittsburgh's police force directly stated that they had no interest in changing that. We were approached by a man who appeared to be homeless, screaming sexually explicit nonsense at us at the top of his lungs. I chose to take the risk of acting as a physical barrier between him and the 50-plus other women present at this event because their safety is my first priority. The man proceeded to scream at me directly and even placed his hands on me at one point. I called 911, and while the police appeared to have taken him aside and spoken to him as we were starting our event, he was ultimately not detained. When we returned from our walk roughly an hour later, we immediately noticed that the man was still roaming around the area. Another officer happened nearby, and I informed him that I had already called 911 about this man once. The officer got an attitude with me and asked, "Well, what would you like me to do about it?" I said I'd like for the man to be detained, as he had already proven to be a threat to not just me, but the 50 other women present. He said no and left after denying me his name and badge number. The threatening man once again approached me, and I was left to fend for myself. Is this a safety standard for which we want Pittsburgh to be known? Thousands of women within my organization are new to our city and looking for friendship. Is this really the welcome we want to provide to our newcomers? We strive to support Pittsburgh-based businesses at every event that we hold, but if our safety is in jeopardy, we simply cannot continue to do so. We will need to have our events outside of the city, and thousands of women will not patronize Pittsburgh businesses, both large and small, as a result. Simply put, I demand change. The blatant disregard for the safety of a large group of women from the Pittsburgh Police is wildly concerning, to say the least. But the issues with drug abuse and homelessness in our city have gone on long enough. Tourists in other high-traffic areas are becoming unsafe in our city, and the way it is viewed by both residents and visitors is going to deteriorate as a result. I urge the Council to implement changes to combat these issues before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Peter Friedrich.
Peter Friedrich, South Side. What's happening right now in Gaza with the war is heartbreaking, and it has shown us here in Allegheny County how, just how much international issues really affect all of us. And when these things happen, these days, it's not just over there, but it also impacts us right here. This all really shows us just how much we truly are a global community where if one part of the body suffers, all the other parts suffer with it. But what does all this have to do with Pittsburgh? Well, the Gaza issue has really exposed how we so often overlook the way that things happening here in our home actually impact the lives of other people abroad. But Gaza is actually not the only issue like that. Pennsylvania is home to hundreds of thousands of Indian-Americans, a beautiful, thriving, and often deeply religious community which includes Christians, Muslims, Hindus, Sikhs, and many others. But when I get talking with my Indian-American friends here in PA, they have shared concerns about things we're seeing around Pittsburgh and the county. You see, just like with Gaza, what's happening in India has concrete ties to us here in Pittsburgh. And one reason is because there is a local organization right here which appears to be directly connected to a violent and supremacist regime that has taken over the country of India. I asked the Pittsburgh City Council to take note of this organization, the HSS, because the HSS has been approaching local governments all over PA and getting platformed and praised by them. I don't know if Pittsburgh is already engaged with the HSS, but that organization has two chapters in this city. The HSS is the American wing of a paramilitary in India called the RSS, and both the HSS and RSS embrace a radical ideology called Hindutva, a hateful ideology which promotes wiping out Christians and Muslims from that country. When this group approaches you, I want to warn you that they will play on your ignorance of ongoing atrocities being perpetrated by Hindutva groups in India to get access to your political power here in America. Groups like the HSS desperately want to influence American politicians to help whitewash a situation in India which experts are calling an impending genocide of Indian minorities. And we've seen this happen recently, even here, when the Pittsburgh City Paper and The Intercept reported how top HSS leaders are fundraising for Bhavini Patel for U.S. Congress. Well, Philadelphia native and now U.S. Congressman Rokanis called it "the duty of every American politician to reject Hindutva." And I do wish that politicians like Bhavini Patel would listen to him, but there is something that the City Council can do. It's the duty of every Pittsburgh politician of any faith or even none at all to reject any association with Hindutva groups like the HSS. So if and when they do approach you, please pause. Take just five seconds, Google "HSS" and "RSS" and save the steel city from a scandal by closing the door on the HSS. And I have an information packet on all of this for every member of the council.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Good morning. My name is Howard Philip Jackson, H.P. Jackson, B. Pep. Grew up with NHCP all my life, growing up in Pittsburgh. I was humiliated Saturday morning on my way to the Poor People's Campaign in Harrisburg. The bus was late, and I went and walked up to, with my walker, to the old Doubletree. They call it Wine Hotel, whatever. And I knew the federal building wasn't open Saturday morning, and I decided to go to the hotel. So I go to the security and asked him if I could go to the bathroom. I have, what I have on, represent my country. And you wonder, if this here is 1857, March the 6th, Supreme Court said people of color wasn't recognized as Americans. This is 2024. I'm a veteran. Represent my country. So he sends me to the receptionist, and she tells me I have to pay for a room to go to the bathroom. I'm 100%. You see this? Okay, no need. And what I had on, so three of my associates, they're on their way to the Poor People's Campaign also. They advised me to go to the second floor, to the cafeteria. And I go to the second floor. Security gets in my face. I'm a man. I tell them, "I'm 70 years old. Back up. I'm gonna whoop your ass." All right? So the reality is that he called security in this old record. He called the police. So I had to leave. Right across the street where the amputee ramp is, I had to relieve myself to make sure traffic didn't see me. And then I left and went on down to the building, but the three ladies that went to the cafeteria, they got a discount on their meal. Now ask yourself, ask yourself, is this America? Am I a veteran that served this country, and I'm disrespected as an amputee? Now what can you do for me? Now I'm asking for your help. I'm asking for your help, counsel. I live in Allegheny County, and I represent my country. I need your help. Can you help me? Can you, is there a conspiracy of corporation and money disrespecting veterans, period? Okay? At a public facility? Is this here Steppin' and Fetchin' Day, or can I have you your humanitarian support for veterans today? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Devin McLean, Pittsburgh, PA, Cliff Street. And being a unemployed, uh, uh, yeah, used to be under unemployed, uh, veteran myself, being black in Pittsburgh, sir, the short answer is no. Nothing. It's great to see women in construction, but I'd also like to see more women digging the ditches and working in the recycling plant during the graveyard shift in the wintertime, too, you know, for equality and stuff, you know? And being so, you know, it's still kind of hard for being a black kid if you want to be a construction worker and your parents ain't doing right to get a driver's license so you can be just the laborer on the site to work your way up. You want to stop the violence, dude? Y'all got it all wrong. You need a place where these young black kids can actually lay their heads, and they don't have to listen to their thought-pocket mothers who happen to be strung out, always stealing their stuff and keeping them awake at night, asking you for $3, and another $3, and another $4, and another $6. Oh, come on, man. You ain't got a cigarette? Just one cigarette. I'll pay you back tomorrow. I'll pay you back tomorrow. You people have effectively legalized the best two pastimes of these baseheads and junkies: theft and harassment. And the Pittsburgh police still aren't trained to see if a chick has been smoking crack all day, or if a dude's been smoking crack all day, and they will tell you anything so that they can't believe it. When you have a police force that shows up somewhere, and they already know who they have to believe, where's the investigation, what are they doing, what are you paying them for? And I need you black women to start telling these police officers how it really is in the black community, where a black woman can just come in and start messing with your stuff, and there's nothing you can do about it. There's nothing you can call. Woman, stop giggling. It must be you and your sisters spreading this garbage philosophy through the black community, making it such trash. And while you're at it, why don't you go find the dude who shot my little cousin up and, up and beef you that day, dude? Two shooters and, and, and nobody, you want to stop the violence, man? Get rid of these crack-smoking broads and these junky dudes because they're gonna start getting stabbed out here, man. Call somebody. Can't call nobody. Who am I supposed to call?
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Special Agent Sunshine here. How's everybody doing? That was, that was a lot. I'm going to speak on black magic spells. Anybody sending any to me right now, I return this into one million fold. If you can't handle the backfire, stop doing it, because it's energy. And if it doesn't hit where you're sending it, it goes back. If it doesn't hit you that sent it, it goes to somebody you love. God doesn't miss. It'll be your mother, your child. Is it okay? They're sacrificing women, children, for money. That's what they're doing with voodoo magic. That's what they're doing. It's for money. It's booming business now. Like, when did this start? When did it happen? Like, really? This is how people are living. That's how they're making money now, off of death. Really? Is it okay? Will it be okay if it happens to you or somebody you love, or one of your children, or somebody's child you know is abducted and sacrificed for their body parts for money? Outweight. It's not okay. It's not okay. I just want to say this prayer, and I'm gonna end it. Lord, I give you control over my life so you can affect others through my words and actions. Make my days count for eternity however you choose. Do not let me waste them. Live your life through me in such a way that many recognize their need for you. In Jesus's name, amen. I'm a living sacrifice. Voodoo didn't work on me. Why? Because God chose me to come here and shine a light on it, so the world can see that it's real and it's happening. People are being sacrificed. Is it okay? No, it is not.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Jacob Poole. My previous name is Zoltan Jolt Jakob from Eastern Europe. I've been in the Pittsburgh area for many years, and I'm here to speak about child trafficking. Pittsburgh is listed as one of the top 10 places that has slave-traded children that were brought here as children, child trafficked here for exploitation. And I'm one of those children. I was passed through University of Pittsburgh facilities for years, given degrees, paraded with the name Jolt Jakob, Jolt Poole, all over. University of Pittsburgh- University of Pittsburgh, many, several degrees, Carnegie Mellon Facilities, National Energy Lab, associated with University of Pittsburgh, PNC Bank, Giant Eagle, passed through pretty much most facilities in the Pittsburgh area for years with the name Joltjakob, Zoltan Jakob, Jolt Levantapool. Pretty much associating me with Eastern Europe and trying to say that I was rescued via the Heinz Children Institute and Ligonier Butler Organizations, passed through Ligonier High School, then to Pittsburgh, through that network of child trafficking. Because I was in European police as custody when I was 10 years old in Europe who busted a ring of paramilitary groups operating, operating with Pittsburgh money, holding dozens of women captive in apartment complexes and forcing them to birth as many as 10 to 13 children each going on a period of 10 years to make children to put into these facilities during the instability in the 80s and 90s to bring here with the name Zoltan Jakob, Jolt Jakob. I was in that facility until I was about 12, being taught languages with security guards and gates with hundreds of children, all being prepared like farm animals at a kennel to be shipped here and passed around with Eastern European records and names. I was actually taken from Holocaust survivor. The woman that birthed me was a hol, was a fam, was a woman that was children of Holocaust survivors. She had family relatives connected to famous scientists and Nobel Prize winners and during government instabilities in the 80s and 90s, Czechoslovakia, Hungary, Romania, Ukraine, Yugoslavia, people were just going around grabbing at women that had value and forced them to birth children and Americans bought them. And I'm one of them. I'm here alone, isolated with no hope, no family, nothing. Passed through Ligonier's Butler Organization, Pittsburgh Heinz Foundation, passed through every institute in Pittsburgh, Carnegie Mellon, PNC Bank, University of Pittsburgh, National Energy Lab. My name's posted on all their records. And I have surgical scars all over my bodies for slave child, slave trading surgical scars with no medical records so I can be held captive. And there are hundreds of us like this in Pittsburgh.
Thank you, next speaker, please. Any further speakers? Seeing none, that will take us to presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Charland, Chair of Human Resources.
New new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 212, Resolution, Amending Resolution 872 of 2021, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements for the continued implementation of the city's SPAD and NEUTR program by increasing the approved amount by $70,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $210,000 over three years.
Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Mr. President. Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 213, Resolution, Amending Resolution 428 of 2021, which provided for the extension of a professional services agreement or agreements with NCR Corporation to provide citywide credit, debit and e-check payment services for the collection of various program and permitting fees for the city of Pittsburgh by exercising the option to extend the term of the agreement for three additional years at no cost to the city. Bill 214, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of innovation and performance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement with Pittsburgh Community Television, Inc. for services related to administering and managing the city's designated public access channels for a period of two years at an amount not to exceed 66% of funding received into designated code accounts for the years 2023 and 2024. And Bill 215, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a content licensing agreement or agreements with amendments thereto with Google LLC for Google to share certain data with the city at no cost to the city.
Thank you, Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth and Senior Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 216, Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Citron Alex PC for legal services in connection with the litigation matter in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an amount not to exceed $10,475.88 over one year. Bill 217, Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of network deposition services for legal transcript services for an amount not to exceed $1,977.13 over one year. Bill 218, Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Spillman Thomas and Battle, PLLC, for expert legal services in connection with the litigation matter in the United States District Court for Western District of Pennsylvania for an amount not to exceed $8,491.50 over one year. Bill 219, Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Michael D. McDowell Esquire for arbitration services for an amount not to exceed $3,800 over one year. Bill 220, Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Adil Sharif Al-Gurari in an amount not to exceed $3,400 over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to his parked vehicle from a city ES recycling vehicle on April 21st, 2023. And Bill 221, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title 9, zoning, Article 902.03, zoning map by changing from RMH Residential Multi-Unit High Density to UNC Urban Neighborhood Commercial Certain Properties Located on Shady Avenue in the 7th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh known in the Allegheny County Office of Deed Registry as Block and Lot Number 84G239 and a portion of 84G258.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 222, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Southwestern Pennsylvania Corporation in the Amount of $32,500 for a Comprehensive Safety Action Plan for Allegheny County and the City of Pittsburgh. Bill 223, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the North Avenue Signals and Safety Project and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $2,500,000 reimbursable at 80% and a municipal share of commonwealth incurred costs at a cost to the City of Pittsburgh not to exceed $20,000. Bill 224, Resolution Amending Resolution 277, Effective June 26th, 2020, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a Second Amendment to the Agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and Pass Shack Plus MTR for Professional Landscape Architectural Services for Arsenal Park Phase 1 Design to change the fund sources in the contract. The net change of the amendment is decreasing the total not to exceed amount by $2,862 from $544,174 to $541,312. And Bill 229, Resolution Adopting the Goal of Reducing Traffic Fatalities and Serious Injuries in Road Traffic in the City of Pittsburgh to Zero and Endorsing the Vision Zero Strategy to Achieve This Goal.
And then Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, and I have one informing appointment.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 225, Resolution Informing City Council of the Appointment of Scott Bricker as a Member of the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission with the Term to Expire December 31st, 2028.
And we need a motion to read, receive and file.
To move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We will now move on to unfinished business. Madam Clerk, if you read both bills.
Bill 117, Resolution Appointing Cal Webster as a Commissioner on the Commission for Human Relations for a Four-Year Term, which will expire February 28th, 2028. And Bill 118, Resolution Appointing Mary Jane McCullough as a Commissioner on the Commission for Human Relations for a Four-Year Term, which will expire February 28th, 2028.
And may we have a motion to approve both appointees?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both appointees have been approved. That takes us on to the, uh, reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Strasburger, Committee on Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 205, Reported at Committee on Finance and Law for February 28th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 27, Resolution Amending Resolution 858 of 2023, entitled Resolution Making Appropriations to Pay the Expenses of Conducting the Public Business of the City of Pittsburgh and for Meeting the Debt Charges Thereof for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2024 so as to reopen the 2024 Operating Budget to accommodate changes in the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Fire, the Department of Finance and the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service in direct response to the Ratified Collective Bargaining Agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local One. Bill 163, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Carlo University in an Amount Not to Exceed $113,400 to Support the Creation of a Wellness Index for Black Women. Bill 164, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Fisher &amp; Phillips LLP for Legal Services in Connection with the Collective Bargaining Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $162,660.50 over one year. Bill 165, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Thomas Thomas &amp; Hayfer LLP for Expert Legal Services in Connection with Litigation Matter in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed $2,565.63 over one year. Bill 166, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Network Deposition Services for Certified Copies of Transcripts for an Amount Not to Exceed $11,986.74 over one year. Bill 167, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Jacqueline Lane in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Her Property as a Result of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police SWAT Incident on August 23rd, 2023 in an Amount Not to Exceed $6,978 over one year. Bill 168, Resolution Amending Resolution 861 of 2023, Effective December 27th, 2023, which authorized appropriations and salaries of the Stop the Violence Fund for the 2024 Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2024 to add positions that report to the Department of Parks and Recreation as authorized by Ordinance 35 of 2023, Effective December 16th, 2023. The proposed expenditures of the Stop the Violence Fund for the 2024 Fiscal Year are hereby appropriated in the sum of $9,852,848. Bill 172, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 41 of 2024 entitled Providing for the Sell of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales Items A through K. 268 Lombard Street, 2431 Wiley Avenue, 746 Clarissa Street, 4918 Rosetta Street, 123 Overbeck Street, 149 Henderson Street, 1400 Tumbo Street. As to add items, E, Zero Iceline Street, I, 510 Stratmore Avenue, J, 512 Stratmore Avenue, and K, 514 Stratmore Avenue.
You have heard the reading and the titles of the bills, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when your names are called. Those opposed will vote no, would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills haven't received the legally required numbers of votes, it is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Coghill, presenting on the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 206, Reported at Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for February 28th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 155, Resolution Amending Resolution 248 of 2023, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership to provide an ambassador program to assist police with non-criminal matters in the Central Business District by increasing the approved amount by $600,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $1,200,000 over two years.
You have heard the reading and the titles of the bills, is there any discussion? Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Yeah, I just wanna say I'm gonna vote for this today, but I really am struggling with it because I really don't think $600,000, um, for this program is what is a priority for the city or shouldn't be the priority. I feel like there's so much going on downtown though, and I think that a lot of people there feel like they're forgotten or that we've not done, um, you know, enough for them in term, in terms of some of the struggles that they're going through. So for that reason, I'm going to vote for it because I wanna be supportive of the, of the businesses downtown and the people downtown every single day. But I do think that $600,000 could have purchased a building, could have helped people get off the streets into housing, could have, um, went through a lot of things, but I think this is something that they need more immediate. And it also is employing people, so that's also keeping people off the streets. So I can see some benefits, it's just the timing with the, uh, struggling with our finances, um, that I, that I'm concerned with.
Thank you, any other discussion?
If not, to your point, I'll simply say that I understand the concern, but downtown is a quarter of our tax base and we need to invest in this and many other strategies to ensure that we're bringing as many residents as possible back downtown and that we're supporting workers to come into downtown so that they're also bringing additional taxes, parking taxes, amusement tax, things of that nature. So we, we have to collectively figure out how we're going to solve downtown over the next few years or the city will have a much larger financial hit in the coming years.
Can I say something back to you? I just wanna say I agree with you and that's one of the reasons I am voting for it because downtown does need the investment. But I do think that there's other ways we could have invested this money that would have affected downtown in a po, more positive way. But this is what the leadership and others have agreed to, so I'm gonna be supportive today. Thank you.
Understood. Any further discussion? If not, the bills are not ready for final action. All those in favor will, will vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no, would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills haven't received the legally required numbers of votes, it is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, presenting on the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 207, Reported at Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for February 28th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 138, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements or the use of existing agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and Pass Shack Plus MTR for the Professional Design Services for Fort Pitt Park Phase 1 Improvements at a Cost Not to Exceed $300,000. Bill 189, Resolution Amending Resolution 650 of 2023, which provided for an agreement or agreements with CSX Transportation for Costs Associated with the Construction for the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $439,223 federally reimbursable at 100%. Bill 190, Resolution Amending Resolution 652 of 2023, which provided for an agreement or agreements with Allegheny Valley Railroad Company for Costs Associated with the Construction for the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $250,000 federally reimbursable at 100%. And Bill 191, Resolution Amending Resolution 743 of 2023, which provided for an agreement or agreements with SAI Consulting Engineers for Costs Associated with the Construction Management and Construction Inspection Phases for the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof not to exceed $2,854,186 and 11 cents federally reimbursable at 100%.
You have heard the reading and the titles of the bills, is there any discussion? If not, the bills are not ready for final action. All those in fo, in favor, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, presenting on the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 208, Report to the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for February 28, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2230, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances, that certain structure known as Benai Israel synagogue located at 327 North Negley Avenue in Garfield in the 11th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination, and there is no cost to the city. Bill 51, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Site under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances, that certain site known as Frick Park located at 2005 Beechwood Boulevard in the Swiss Elm Park, Spoor Hill South, Regent Square, Point Breeze Neighborhoods in the 14th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination, and there is no cost to the city.
You have heard the reading and the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion? If not, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills having received the legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith on the Committee of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith presents Bill 209, Report to the Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services for February 28, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 160, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation and/or the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreements in individual amounts of $10,000 or less with performers, instructors, artists, referees, and persons with specialized skills in connection with the department's recreational and instructional programs and special event services. Bill 161, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into financial and in-kind sponsorship agreements valued at $5,000 or less for the City Parks Office of Special Events 2024 season. Bill 161, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Parks and Recreation to enter into sponsorship agreements for the City of Pittsburgh Independence Day Festival. The sponsorship terms will provide a total value of $10,000.
You have heard the reading and the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion? If not, the bills are now ready for final action. All those in favor, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills having received the legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, presenting on the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 210, Report to the Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for February 28, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 156, Resolution Amending Resolution 630 of 2020, which authorized the City's Department of Public Safety to enter into relevant agreements to purchase document management software from Power DMS, Inc., to extend the agreement an additional year for an increase of $34,317.77.
You've heard the reading and the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion? If none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. And finally, Councilman Kohari Mosley, presenting on the Committee of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 211, Report to the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for February 28, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 157, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 5255 Butler Street at No Cost to the City. Bill 158, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 220 North Shore Drive at No Cost to the City. Bill 159, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Multiple Properties on Center Avenue at No Cost to the City. And Bill 184, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 935 of 2021, Effective December 30 of 2021, entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a Cooperation Agreement with the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh to document local cooperation in the Housing Authority's agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes, excuse me, for the Manchester redevelopment housing development by authorizing future amendments to be made to the original cooperation agreement at no cost to the city.
You've heard the reading and the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is now ready for final action. All those in favor, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills having received the legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Is there anything for members? If not, for meeting announcements, this afternoon at 1:00 PM, we will hold an executive session on Bill 137 relative to legal services. And Council Standing Committee meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, March 6th at 10:00 AM. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the Council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Speaker registration closes at 9:00 AM tomorrow morning. With that, we need a motion to, everyone's here, approve the minutes adjourned meeting.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.